Good evening. The time is approximately 6:19 PM. The date is October 28th, 2021. This is a continuation of the City of College Station City Council meeting. We have returned from executive session where we took no action. And we will now resume our meeting with the pledge of allegiance, the invocation. Would you please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Would you please bow your heads? Dear Heavenly Father, as we gather here this evening, we ask for your guidance. Father, we ask for your patience. We know we are mere humans trying to do the best we can for our city and trying to do it in a balanced and civil manner. Therefore, Father, we ask that you embrace us, that you guide us, that you lead us to being the best we possibly can be here before our fellow man. In your name we pray. Amen. This meeting is available through a variety of forms, of course, being here in person, as well as through electronics. And we have a speaker protocol that needs to be followed, and it reads as such: An individual who wishes to address the City Council regarding any item on the agenda other than those items posted for executive session shall register with the City Secretary two hours prior to the meeting being called to order. Individuals must register to speak or provide written comments at https://forms.cstx.gov/forms/cscouncil or provide a name and phone number by calling 979-764-3500. Upon being called to speak, an individual must state their name and city of residence, including the state of residence if the city is located out of state. Each speaker's remarks are limited to three minutes. Any speaker addressing the council through the use of a translator may speak for six minutes. At the three-minute mark, the City Secretary will announce that the speaker must conclude their remarks. We're going to begin this portion of our meeting with a presentation recognizing the faith riders for their achievements with 4H in Brazos County. And let's see. Come on in. Well, howdy.
Howdy.
That's good. All right. This is a proclamation from the office of the mayor's and also the county judge. Whereas, the faith riders are a 4H-mounted drill team that performs intricate choreographed maneuvers on horseback. And whereas, riders can be from eight to 18 years old. And whereas, they perform at rodeo events and compete against other 4H teams, as well as open competitions with adult teams. And whereas, in June 2021, the team competed in the Super Ride Nationals in Athens, Texas, against teams from all over the United States. And whereas, they swept two different quad drill divisions, that's four horses, and placed first, second, and third in each. And whereas, for the national championship division, both maroon and white quads qualified. And whereas, the maroon quad took first place and are the new Super Ride National Champions. And whereas, the white quad took third place. And whereas, there were 20 teams that started out and five made it to the finals. And whereas, the full drill team also won five first places and an additional two third places. And whereas, the gray squad quad, made up of coaches and two moms, won third place twice. And whereas, at the 2021 State 4H Horse Show in July, the team swept all divisions, first, second, and fourth places in quad drill, first place in theme drill, and first place in precision drill. And the kids, whereas, the kids and their families have done the Brazos Valley proud and show how hard work and teamwork can truly make the dream work. Now therefore, I, Carl Mooney, and also on behalf of Andrew Nelson, Mayor of the City of Bryan, and myself, of course, Mayor of the City of College Station, and also on behalf of Dwayne Peters as the Brazos County Judge, and acting on behalf of our respective councils, do hereby recognize and congratulate the faith riders. Give them a round of applause, please, for all they have accomplished. Thank you for coming out. You all look so good. Gosh darn, you make me want to put on jeans. Geez. Howdy. Looking good. Thank you. Thanks for being here, sir. All right. Who gets the proclamation?
I'll take it immediately.
All right. There you go. All right. Thank you all for coming out here tonight. We're really, really proud of what you've been able to accomplish. Thanks so much for representing us and the Brazos County in general in such a great fashion. Thank you. Yeah, we're gonna get a picture. Don't go too far. Don't go too far. We don't got, we're gonna squeeze in between. I'm glad I've got two roses.
Ready on three. One, two, three. We're good. Thank you.
All right. Thank y'all. Thank you. All right. Counsel, before we go any further, I'm gonna, I'd like to introduce someone to you who's with us for the first time this evening, all right? And I, I let him know that I was going to introduce him. Shray, you go by Shray first, right? Okay. Shray Shankar is our new student government liaison this year. And so we're looking forward to him being here and being able to share the viewpoint of students at the A&amp;M campus and also being able to gather information from us and bringing it back to them. All right. So thank you so much for taking the time and being a representative here. Okay, counsel, we're going to move on then to the next item on our agenda, which is the here visitors portion of our meeting. During here visitors, an individual may address the City Council on any item which does not appear on the posted agenda. The City Council will listen and receive the information presented by the speaker, ask staff to look into the matter, or place the issue on a future agenda. Topics of operational concern shall be directed to the City Manager. I also want to share that there are some restrictions that we have and that we need to follow when we have here visitors, because we do have several individuals who have signed up. Oftentimes, we don't have anyone who signs up for here visitors, but tonight we do. So just as a reminder, while members of the public may make public comments on any item not on the agenda this evening during here visitors, including public criticism of this body, please, I ask that you all maintain decorum throughout your comments and discussions. And we, by the way, are not allowed to respond back to you. All right? Just so you know that we're not ignoring your comments, it's just those are the restrictions we have to live by. All right? So we're going to begin, and the first person I have is Mr. James Benham. Mr. Benham.
Well, it's been a minute since I've been here. Howdy.
Howdy.
My name is James Benham. I live in College Station. I'm CEO at a global 250-person software company, a former College Station City Councilman, place six, former mayor pro temp, and am currently a regent at Texas Southern University in Houston, Texas. I grew up traveling with my father on mission trips to Mexico and then ended up learning Spanish while living there for two summers. I've been operating a business in Argentina for 20 years and have over 200 Latin American employees, some of whom are here in College Station on work visas. My wife and children have deep, meaningful relationships with Latin American immigrants here in town and love them and their culture. I am here to denounce the racially charged comments made by Councilman Maloney at the recent candidate forum. Whenever politicians say these things, there's always an explanation followed by an apology, but it rings hollow. It rings hollow when the statements that are made are clearly reflecting a heart of an elected official that has a fundamental belief that a person wouldn't want to live in a city that is majority Latino and where you might have to speak Spanish. The same elected officials and their supporters who say these terrible things are the same people who oppose apartments near neighborhoods, apartments that house lower-income and minority families, are the same people who move elections to odd-year elections. Odd-year elections that are proven to reduce minority voting participation are the same people who have written letters to the editor of The Eagle this week trying to publicly shame people like Sarah Salzer for calling out this hate speech and are trying to shame her into silence by positioning her as the aggressor when she is in fact one of the many victims. Simply unbelievable. I had a good conversation with Mayor Villalobos of McAllen, Texas this week, who had heard of Mr. Maloney's comments and was understandably dismayed. He reminded me that McAllen has a $500 million budget, was named last year as the seventh safest city in the USA. Two weeks ago, DPS ranked McAllen as the second lowest city in the state in violent crime rates, has a tax rate below 50 cents, has a booming economy, safe streets, growing international trade, is majority Hispanic, and has a huge Spanish-speaking population. They also in fact won the Texas Municipal League Commission of the Year Award in this last year. This is a battle for the soul of College Station, and we cannot accept what is going on here. In my year as a regent at Texas Southern University, a historically black university that serves a large population of African-American and Hispanic students, I've seen the types of overt and covert racism that my students, faculty, and administrators have had to endure and it both angers and saddens me. It saddens me that in the year 2021, we still have to deal with this type of hatred and then are accepted, expected to accept a brief apology and pretend as if nothing ever happened. This must change. La cabra siempre tira al monte. ¿A quién vas a votar? Muchas gracias.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Sarah Salzer. Ms. Salzer? Ah, there she comes.
My name is Sarah Rangel Salzer, and I have lived my entire life in College Station and currently reside in Emerald Forest. I am a wife, a business owner, co-founder of a medical mission effort in Mexico. My husband is a local physician who tries desperately to perfect his Spanish. I was raised in a Spanish-speaking family. As a matter of fact, my mother still only speaks Spanish. I am a first-generation Mexican-American. My first language was Spanish. Yo hablo español. My children are enrolled in Spanish courses at A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School, and my youngest is a student at the Multilingual Academy, just to instill the appreciation of our language. We are proud of our heritage, and by way of qualification, I pay taxes in College Station, both commercial and residential properties. I also pay taxes in Washington County. Coincidentally, I pay taxes in Juana Huato, Mexico, as well. I find Mr. Maloney's words intentionally offensive and insulting. Where progress is being made to improve and embrace differences in an effort to create unity, he chose to divide. His words energized age-old racist stereotypes and have reversed the hard-earned progress of our Hispanic community. Initially, I was willing to give him the benefit that he may have misspoken or was taken out of context. Regrettably, he with no remorse doubled down on his position. First, Mr. Maloney offered the fact that his wife is a second-generation Mexican-American and that his children identify with Mexican-Americans. This suggested he meant no disrespect. This argument is a relic of our unfortunate history, a defrauded, empty argument, a fallacy. If anything, his experience with the Hispanic culture should have heightened his sensitivity of the effects of his words, not to be used as a scapegoat. Secondly, he dismissed anyone who was taken back or vocal about his comments, and I'll quote him, "as political adversaries that have fallen into the habit of character assassination. I don't have a political bone in my body. As a matter of fact, my family and closest friends don't even know who I'm politically aligned with." So to be, so just to be clear, I'm concerned that we have elected an official that demonstrates such a profound lack of self-awareness for his Mexican-American constituents. How can someone so callous and insensitive to his instinctual biases represent me and my family and governance in College Station? Finally, just like I teach my children, words have consequences. We are told that elections have consequences. Public servants should serve and unify, not divide and marginalize. As a proud Mexican-American wife and business owner, I have chosen to lift my voice for the benefit of my children and the Hispanic community at large. Disclaimer: I have now become political. Mr. Maloney, you intended precisely what you said. You remain unapologetic and unaware. We cannot allow you to continue on your soapbox from which you can propagate racist and anti-Hispanic uninformed views. I will not be bullied, nor will I be publicly shamed. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joseph Rodriguez.
My name is Joseph Rodriguez. I live at 3328 Sycamore Trail in Bryan. I'm a lifelong citizen of Bryan, Hispanic. My family was one of the first Hispanic families to settle here in Bryan, so I have deep roots here. And when I heard the remarks of Councilman Maloney, I was deeply offended. I too as long, as well as Ms. Salzer, felt that maybe he misspoke. And then I saw the subsequent interviews where he doubled down. The ABC News interview where he was asked if he would apologize and he refused to apologize. Rather, he just said he regretted if he had, if maybe he had hurt someone or hurt some feelings. I think that in his remarks in the debate, he says you wouldn't want to live there. I'd like to know who you were referring to when you said "you." Who is "you"? I'd like to know. Was it the moderator, Mr. De Lucia? Was it our Anglo brethren? Who was it? I think the Hispanic community would like to know. I think you owe the Hispanic community an apology. And I also agree with the mayor, Andrew Nelson, of Bryan, who spoke out against this rightfully, that you should resign, because I believe you have a lot of Hispanic and Spanish-speaking constituents that deserve better, that someone that understands the progress we've made and how far we have to go. And the fact that you're married to a Mexican-American woman, you should know better. You should know better that those words were divisive and wrong and hurtful, but you didn't apologize until later. And it was the spin and the constant moving of the goalposts that made it worse, rather than just apologize for misspeaking. And I think you were given many opportunities to do so, and you didn't. And I just want you to know that it's words like that that set us back rather than move us forward. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Andy Cervantes.
My name is Andy Cervantes. I live in, at 8739 Grasper in Bryan, Texas. Moved here in 1995 from a little town, Eastland, Texas. This is probably the first time I, so I ran, was a used car manager for Allen Honda for 10 years, and the used car manager for the Ford dealership in Nevisota for 10 years. After retiring from that industry, I started a small construction business, and I employ 60 employees, and we do civil construction within the Bryan College Station area. As you can imagine, most of my employees are Hispanic. Not to beat a dead horse, but after the talk from Mr. Trump about the rapist and the drugs and all of that, it kind of broke my heart, Mr. Maloney, that you would make a comment like that at the level that you're at. College Station has been a really good city to be in, in my family, and I don't know that, that you need to walk away, but you definitely need to apologize, and it needs to be heartfelt. I've made a lot of mistakes at the level that you're at. We expect a lot from you, and this city has given us a lot. So I would just ask that you really, really consider the way that you carry yourself from here forward. I'm not going to nail you to the cross, but I would ask that you just simply apologize and make things right. Really, all I got to say, I'm not a politician, and I would have never come up here, ever. These are not, this is not a place for me. You guys do a wonderful job, and I'll leave that to you. Having said that, it bothered me that much that you would make that kind of comment in 2021. I want to get past all this. I want to leave the oak trees, the crosses, and all that way behind us, and we move forward into what we have here, which is something beautiful in the Bryan College Station area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is John Anderson. John Anderson.
Sorry, my hearing isn't all that good anymore.
Okay.
My name is John Anderson. My wife, Ann Anderson, and I have lived at 200 Fireside Circle in College Station for 36 years. It's in Chimney Hill, and the neighbors behind us live in Bryan. I'd like to make three points. First of all, it is a fact that we are two cities in one community, not an antiquated fact. For 30 years, when asked where I'm from, I reply, "Bryan, College Station, Texas, the center of the universe." Work together is the second point. We should work together for the benefit of all citizens of Brazos County and try to live by the Rotary International four-way test. First, is it the truth? Second, is it fair to all concerned? Third, will it build goodwill and better friendships? And fourth, will it be beneficial to all concerned? Third point, we all live in Aggieland, and both cities and the county benefit from Texas A&amp;M facilities in both cities. And finally, I'd like to close by quoting Eldridge Cleaver, "If you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem." Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Ralph Cruzan. Oh, did he? Okay. All right. We'll come back to Mr. Cruzan. I understand that there are some people here who would like to speak but who were not able to sign up. If you would like to still speak, would you please raise your hand so I can acknowledge you? Yes, ma'am. Yeah, come on up.
I, Frances Maloney. I live at 9314 Essex Green College Station. It's in the Wood Creek, Wood Creek subdivision area. Yes, I've heard everything. I've read it, and I've been in the middle of it, and I know Dennis Maloney very well. What he said in the candidate's forum, I heard it. That was totally, uh, missed, was, was taken out of context, misconstrued by people who think my husband, Dennis Maloney, is a very powerful, dangerous man. But in fact, he is a New Yorker who came as fast as he could to Texas, and I grabbed him. He is a man who has a lot of moral ethics, integrity. He is honest. He will not lie, and he certainly will not drag anybody through the mud. He is not a word-calling, mud-slinging person. However, the, him saying those words were words that were taken from my aunt, who lives in Lifer. I have relatives who live in Raymondville. I have a half-sister who grew up in Donna. We know all about, you know, the town there. And a couple of people who made a comment on my husband's mayor for college, I mean, for City Council, his website, they're from down the valley, and they said what he said, there's nothing racist about it. If you live there and you want to live there, that's fine. We choose to live where we grow our families, our homes, our businesses. We've, we have our roots planted. So, like I said, this gentleman has served the City of College Station faithfully. He has done everything he can in his power to voice those concerns for its citizens and its all citizens. I'm from Snook. I grew up in Bryan, meaning going to the stores and so forth, but I'm a graduate of Snook High School. I'm a Blue Jay. But you know what? I don't see color, because my family is the epitome of what used to be called the melt, the melting pot of America. But I see us ourselves really as a toss salad, because we all bring our own ideas to the But when people start talking about racism, there's an underlying concern in there, because they don't feel comfortable. I do. I'm a retired teacher, and I retired from Bryan ISD. I saw minority recruitment committees there. I had people, I was the ESL teacher for my campus, the only one. I saw all kinds of children. Now, there's nothing racist about him saying, you know, if you want to, you wouldn't want to go there unless you speak the language. You need to be able to manipulate it, to understand it. I would say that many of you have mistaken bias for racism. We all have biases, and I think that's what you need to look at yourself in the mirror and find it, because my family is mixed. Dennis is the odd man out. Well, we have a son-in-law who's odd man out, too. But we have, I have a half-sister who is a black. Some people call him colored. I had an aunt who was colored, from Louisiana, great cook. Have an uncle who is half Mexican-American, half-black. Have an aunt who is white. Her daughter, half-white, half-Mexican-American. You tell me who's racist. You tell me who's racist. We all say things that are mistaken, like, wait a minute, what did you mean? But it's not dragged out in the mud. But I'm proud to have him by my side and I'm in his corner because you will never find a more honest, more ethical person than Dennis. I didn't want him running last time, but he was called upon to do so. So, you take it upon yourselves, those people who are attacking and dragging my husband through the mud, throwing darts at him, you look at yourself. Because I don't see myself as Mexican-American. No, I see myself as a citizen at College Station, and I am a woman. But that doesn't mean anything because really, I prefer to be called a lady. Color doesn't mean anything. When people meet me, they have no idea. They think I'm Hawaiian. That's why I just stand there like, okay, whatever you think. It doesn't mean anything. It's your heritage. Yeah, my, my grandparents are from Mexico. One was born in El Paso. He's Irish. So if you want to blame anything, blame his Irish blood. But that's all I have to say. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. There was a gentleman in the back row who indicated, yes, sir.
Mr. Cruzan is back as well.
What's that?
Cruzan is back.
Oh, yes. Yeah, I saw. Yeah, I'll get him up here. Don't worry.
Hello. My name's Joseph Mungia. I live in Bryan, Texas now. Moved back after 31 years working for the state of Texas, Texas Parks and Wildlife Department, 31 years. I've known Dennis since, I guess since I was about 13. He's my brother-in-law. Worked with him since I was 17. Honest man, loved to work with him. Didn't always listen to what he had to say sometimes, but then, I was 17 years old. Maybe I should have listened to him a little bit better sometimes, but no. As far as, just wanted to bring the attention about racism, I think it, it's totally wrong as far as him think, them people thinking that he's racist. No. The comments, the people have made, they're hurtful as far as I'm concerned. Like I said, couldn't find a more honest man, like my sister said, more ethical. Loved having him as a brother-in-law and as a, basically as a coworker. And really, I've, I've seen what he's done so far for the community. I've heard people talk about it in support of him, from our customers, because I've, I've worked with him painting for all those years. So, and he's also, he helped me get through A&amp;M. I owe him that much. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cruzan, you're back. Would you please step forward, please?
My full name is Rafael Cruzan. I spell it with a P H because my father was an Anglo-American, but my mother was Hispanic. By the way, I need to tell you where I'm from. I grew up in college, I didn't grow, I grew up in Tyler. I live down the street on Westover in Carter's Grove. So I, I am, been a citizen of College Station for about 10 years now. And I wanted to come visit with you because when I heard about these comments about Mr. Maloney, I was very concerned. So I, I picked up the phone and I called around. And quickly I found out from College Station residents who I trusted, many who had been here quite a few years. Every single person told me, we, we refuse to believe this. We cannot believe this. We know Mr. Maloney. We know him to be a man with integrity. We, we know he has a good heart. Ralph, we can't believe this. Then, you know, but, but like I said, I was real concerned. So then I picked up the phone and I called Judge Helena Vazquez, who's really probably the highest-elected Hispanic official in this city. And she said, Ralph, I was very concerned, and I, I had an opportunity to visit with Mr. Maloney and his wife. I feel like he offered an appropriate apology. And as far as I'm, as far as she's concerned, this matter is closed. And, you know, I was listening to these people talk, and there just seemed to be a theme that ran through it. And I already suspected the theme. I've already seen some of this. You notice one gentleman mentioned, well, all these apartments weren't, they were not, not allowed because of Mr. Maloney. And, and if you look, you'll see every single person who's involved in this is involved in real estate. Gee, how convenient. Let's, let's get rid of Mr. Maloney and then, then we can have these apartments. Never mind that someone like me, who's worked all this life to pay off a home, is, is worried to death about what's going to happen to my neighborhood. You know, people go out and they buy a home and, and, and there's people are coming from out of town who want to do all kinds of things, you know? And I'm, I believe that we do need development, but, but we need controlled development. We just can't do everything, you know? And, and, and as I listen to people talk against Mr. Maloney, every single one's involved in real estate. I can promise you that. And I've heard this, I've heard this story before with other names. This isn't anything new. I can promise you. You know, and then, then I, I ask and I find out that Mr. Maloney is fluent in Spanish. If I'm wrong, somebody correct me. But, but, you know, someone who goes that much trouble can't be anti-Hispanic, is the way I look at it. But, but anyway, I, I'm here to say I support Mr. Maloney. I'm, I'm sorry this happened. I, I think it was, his words were a mistake, but he apologized, and it's, it's time to move on. Thank you, Mr. Maloney.
Sir, thank you. Once again, if there is anyone else who was unable to sign up, yes, ma'am.
My name's Marie Garcia. I'm 1409 Hollick Drive. I'm here to support Councilman Maloney. I've known him for clearly 48 years or probably more. I am his sister-in-law, and he is a great man, and I'm sorry that he's going through all this. But I know there's plenty of citizens here that will support Councilman Maloney, and, and I'm just here for his support. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. One more call? Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Justin Farrell. I've resided at 1808 Bee Creek Drive in College Station, Texas. I'm also Republican Party Precinct Chair of Precinct 31 in Brazos County. And I just wanted to address, I think that any, I'm very careful with my words when it comes to things involving race because I don't want to indict anybody's soul. And I think it's important that we're all thoughtful whenever we use our words and we speak. And I know sometimes that even me myself, I can be, you know, quite rambunctious sometimes. And some of you know that, some of you don't know me, but some of you know that I can be. I will say that I am not involved in real estate, and not at all. I'm not, and I resent that. I mean, the reason why I came in here today is I do have genuine frustrations, and a lot of it does have to do with crime and crime around the Bee Creek area. And if you've heard me over the past few months, you know it's actually been a concern for me. My fiance won't even go run in Bee Creek anymore after what happened months ago. And there's shootings right down the road on Valley View, right down from my house. We, we need to invest in our police department, maybe a little bit more, maybe look at how we're doing it. And I know that's a conversation that needs to be had with the city manager and passed on and figured out in the budgeting going forward. But I think that there are some genuine concerns on the other side of this conversation, and it has nothing to do with development, and it has nothing to do with realtors. It's just good citizens. I, I'm a veteran myself, an Army veteran. I served in the United States Army. I was a paratrooper. I actually broke my back while I served and was medically retired. And so, you know, I own a small business doing advertising here locally, helping businesses like Aaron Automotive, you know, get off the ground and try to do something good for this community and provide jobs. And I think it's just really important that we all pay attention to what's happening around us and, you know, I really don't have anything personal to say to anyone here today. I just want the whole council to, to kind of hear what I'm saying and, and maybe help you understand why there is some other frustration on this side of the dais from some people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, last call. Anyone else who wishes to speak? Seeing none, then we will close the "here visitors" portion of our meeting. And we're moving on now to our workshop items. All right, Council, we're going to move on to, let's see, we're going to, actually, we're going to withdraw, I believe-